Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting for October 15, 2025. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, P L 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready for the roll call? All right, Councilman in Barson?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Bob La Court asked to be excused. Shaw Keller?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq and Charles Brown asked to be excused. Robert Thomas?
Here.
Mark Dancy?
Here.
And Chairman Orsini?
Here.
All right, so the first items of business tonight are minutes. The first, the planning board regular meeting from September 3. If there's no changes or corrections, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Bob Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Dancy?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And second set of minutes, a regular meeting of the planning board from September 17, 2025.
And I should have said that on this one, Councilman in Barson and Jennifer Ragnow cannot vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Bob Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. All right, two resolutions. First one for B9. Probably don't have to remind everyone where that stemmed from, so move to approve the resolutions, moralizing the conditions to the court.
Okay, so those that can vote, Councilman in Barson, Ted Chase, and Chairman Orsini.
I move to approve.
Second.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Ted Chase?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Second resolution, Temple Beth El, minor sub. I would move to approve that. Mark, if you'll let us know, can vote.
See, Councilman in Barson cannot, Jennifer cannot, and Mark Dancy cannot.
So I made a motion to approve. I get a second on Temple Beth El?
Second.
Second from Shaw.
Okay, thank you. Ted Chase?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Bob Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. It doesn't look as though we have any discussion items. We come to the portion of the meeting where we're open to the public for general planning comments, which I will move to do. Somebody second that.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open for any general planning comments. If you are here for either of the two hearings, 500 Atrium or Hamilton Street, there will be openings to the public specifically for those applications, so this is not the time to talk about those. Seeing no takers, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Without further ado, we have 500 Atrium. Matt, and for those who are here for this, we had an initial hearing in which we gave the applicants some instruction. They are now back after having addressed our comments for preliminary and major final site plan approval.
Good evening, members of the board. Matt Flynn from Savo Schock Law in Somerville, here tonight representing the applicant 500 Atrium LLC in connection with its application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with bulk variances to demolish an existing office building, construct two warehouse buildings, each about 69,000 square feet on the site designated as Block 468.01, Lot 21.07 in your tax records, and, as the LLC name indicates, more commonly known as 500 Atrium Drive. We were last before the board on July 16 of this year, where you heard testimony from our engineer and our architect. We took feedback from the board and your professionals and are happy to report the following changes, which we'll outline in testimony. Number one, we've reduced the square footage of the buildings. Originally, combined, they were about 161,000 square feet. Now we're at 139,000 square feet combined. Two, we've further reduced the impervious coverage onsite now is about 78%. When we came to the board in July, that figure was at 75% for the proposal. Now we are at 69.85%, which is below the 70% that the board had recommended that we get to at the last hearing. And finally, we've reconfigured the drive aisles and added some landscaping such that we no longer need a variance for the parking lot and the front yard setback for the parking lot in the front yard. So we've eliminated a variance as part of this proposal. We've received the memos from your various board consultants and township personnel. We can report that we are able to comply with all of the recommendations in those memos. If there's something specific the board wants to get to, we certainly can go through those memos. With me tonight, I do have four witnesses, the same team from last time. Craig Stires, our professional engineer, Brian DeBarbieri, our architect, Betsy Dolan, our traffic engineer, and then we have John Tykina, our professional planner. So really, unless there's anything the board wants to start discussing at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Stires sworn in.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Craig Stires, S.T.I.R.E.S.
We're gonna need, yeah.
Sorry about that. Craig Stires, S.T.I.R.E.S., business address 43 West High Street in Somerville.
I mean, Craig, has your qualifications or expertise changed any since the last time you were sworn before this board?
No.
Then you're accepted.
Thank you.
Mr. Stires, why don't you take the board through the changes to the site plans since we were last here?
I'm trying to get this displayed.
Hey, Mark. Everyone, the internet was cut out.
Is that TV on?
He has to.
Is that on?
Mark.
Yeah, it's got.
That's good.
And it works, it's good.
There we go. Okay, sorry about that. So the last time we were here, as Matt said, we were over 74% with our coverage. We had two buildings that were 72,000 and 73,000 plus. And, you know, we put some testimony in, but, you know, as our discussions went along, you know, we kind of cut things short. We had some direction from the board that ideally would be to get it at 70% if possible, and also discussions about a feasible project and buildings trying to be that at 70,000 plus or minus. So we went back to the drawing board and obviously revised the plans, got the buildings to just under 70,000, so they're both 69,252, I believe. And also changed the parking lot to the north. If you recall, that driveway used to come in right about this point here. This parking lot was into the setbacks, and it was roughly 22, 23 feet from the right of way. What we did was we shifted that parking lot back, lost obviously some of the building to accommodate that, took the driveway that was to the parking lot and combined it with the emergency access. So now the parking lot access would be off of the cul-de-sac, and then the emergency access would continue off of that, again, saving some square footage. So ultimately, we got down to 69.85%, which is below that targeted 70%. And then the other major thing was Mr. Thomas had concerns about the landscaping in the front yard, the rest of the board as well, and also saving some of the trees along Atrium Drive. So what we did was, as much as possible, started with saving a lot of the trees along Atrium Drive, and then, as you can see, supplemented the landscaping in the front of the building along Atrium and also along the Atrium Drive cul-de-sac, and also eliminating that driveway allows, allowed us to fill in a little bit more. So there's actually an existing berm here with existing tree, it's a landscape berm already. This curb line here is essentially following the curb line that is out there today, so that this berm is essentially going to remain unchanged and supplemented. So again, ultimately, we have two buildings that are 69,252. The front yard setback for the parking lot on the cul-de-sac side is not required anymore. We have eliminated one of the driveways, so now we only have three, two off of Atrium, one off of the Atrium Drive cul-de-sac. 60 parking spots rather than 71. Again, the coverage is 69.85.
Credit the parking, it's 60, but with two EV credits, so we are compliant on the parking.
Yes, 62, correct. So ultimately, we have a, we reduced the coverage by 15,322, which is a 25,252 reduction from what is out there now. As far as the trees, we've added 105 trees along Atrium Drive, 21 along Atrium Drive cul-de-sac, as well as 315 shrubs. I think I covered everything else. So that, I think those were the major discussion points and the changes that we made to this point.
And are you in receipt of Mr. Mazzi's October 6, 2025 memorandum?
Yes.
And can you confirm, for purposes of the record, that we take no exception with any of the recommended, I'll call them plan cleanups, that he's requested in that letter?
Yes, yeah, they're pretty much all technical in nature, and again, we can work with Darren, like we've done in the past, to resolve any post-approval stuff.
I have no further direct questions of Mr. Stires at this time.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Craig. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, is it possible to get a look at what the site plan is beyond the building on the left? To the left, I don't know if that's south.
Any further than that? No.
All right, the building then is across the street from what will be an affordable housing complex.
That would be up in this area here, towards the top.
But the building is across the street, and the landscaping.
Which building?
The left, one on the left, right?
The one on the left would be the, it's kind of a mixed use that faces Pier Street. The affordable housing would be along the top here.
Okay, and the landscaping?
Yes.
Has done a lot with it, and I also understand that addressing any conflicts with the affordable housing would have to, probably better be done, would be done better when it comes for a site plan, at least it's, and especially since you're the permitted use and they're not, but I think that that's a big improvement.
The goal was to add the landscaping requested along Atrium to buffer that future development?
Right, right.
Correct.
Ted?
Well, I thank you for moving that parking lot in and thereby saving most of the trees fronting the cul-de-sac, although there's a couple more that are still shown as X's on the demolition plan that are not in the parking lot, so I wondered about them. And also, up at the front, the truck entrance, you've got nice, big areas there for plantings, but again, there are several X's, particularly the ones just to the south side of the entrance, which are, I assume, are existing trees that you're still planning to take down, and I wondered, why can't those be saved?
Well, the ones that are in the upper right on the plan, which would be the northwest, the only ones I took down were where the utilities would go through, and it was tough to, you know, because we're really using the existing and tying in, so the route is a little difficult.
Okay.
So there were a couple there, and then more so, if, I would say it's the grading and the removal of the existing building that really constituted some of the removal along Atrium Drive, because you have the building and then you have, I don't know, it's almost like ventilation for the building that's right up to Atrium Drive, and the trees are interdispersed in there, so I wouldn't expect they would survive. I mean, they are, some of those are larger, we could do, we can, but they're really close to that appendage, I guess you could say, of the building. Well, I tried to save everything I could along, on both roads.
Well, okay, if you, if you tried, but I just always view it that an existing tree is going to be much bigger than anything you'd be planting right now.
Yep.
Another point, no idling signs. I think you just have one shown up at the entrance.
Right.
And what we, and we as the environmental commission generally ask for is, in the area of the loading docks, to have a sign about every fourth dock so that truck drivers can't say they didn't see them.
So you would have fixed them right on the building?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So if you've got 10 docks, you put them on 1, 4, 7, and 10. I mean, on the building, they don't have to be a separate stand or anything, and then there should be ones at the entrance to the car parking areas, although it's not likely that idling will be a problem there. It's just, you know, trucks, you really got to tell, so.
And Dr. Chase, the applicant agreed to basically comply with the staff reports, so that's spelled out in the environmental commission report, and I refer to that comment as well.
Yeah, actually, I don't, I looked at the environmental commission report, and I didn't, somehow we missed making the no idling sign there.
I thought I read it.
I think it might have been in the first one.
Yeah, they had mentioned it in one of their reports, so, and the applicant agreed to comply with all the staff reports.
Yeah, okay, well.
Mark, it's paragraph four of your report on page four. You do call it out, so we'll work with you to make sure that's complied with.
Okay, thank you.
And I just say that the, putting the landscaping on the plan is very, very busy. I can't tell too much of what is where, but on the other hand, I don't really care which spruce species you're using at a particular point. It's a combination of mostly evergreen and occasional.
Are you saying there's too much landscaping?
What?
Are you saying there's too much landscaping?
No. Anyway.
I've never, I've never heard Ted say that.
I'm not asking for any change there, it's good. And I thank you for having a complete list responding to all comments, which, because when we're reviewing a plan in this third go-round, you, particularly if you don't have the first go-round plans in front of you, it's hard to know sometimes what's been changed, and here you've really told us, and I just wish that all applicants would do that.
We remind them over and over again.
They do.
You know, you're fortunate, both hearings tonight fulfill that, and it's part of the reason why they're here, because they didn't, might not be. Jen?
Just a quick clarifying question from the last time we met. The stairs at the bottom, are they going away? Are they going to be stairs leading to nowhere? I can't remember.
Yeah, so it's a cross-access easement between the two lots. The sculpture that's there is going to be removed because that's solely on our property.
Got it.
For the stairs, if the stair, the easement language says that if the stairs have to be repaired, either party can do it and charge the other party half of the cost.
Okay.
So we will just deal with that with the other owner, and if during construction we determine that they have to basically be replaced in kind, my understanding is they're already falling apart as it is, but to the extent that they have to be replaced in kind, we have the authority to do that. So we're leaving the stairs, and to the extent that they have to be repaired, we'll do so.
Okay, great, thank you. I couldn't remember.
Yeah, and it looks like Darren Mazzi in his report, comment 15, he still has some questions about that, too, so.
Yeah, I mean.
They're going to have to work, you know.
The way, essentially, the plans are now are to remove the existing, and if we are required to replace, I have them shown, and they do work into this site plan.
Okay.
So it's kind of an either-or to make it work, but, like Matt said, we'll work it out with the neighbors.
Yeah, and you'll have to work it out as well to the satisfaction of our engineer, so it's.
Yeah, understood.
Done properly, whichever direction.
Yeah, understood, and just for purposes of the record, I can affirm that we have sent letters certified that they received to try to engage in that dialogue, and so far, we've been unsuccessful. So I was happy to learn that in reviewing the language of the easement, that we're actually able to make the repairs unilaterally.
Good to know. Anybody else have any questions for Craig? If not, can you introduce your next witness?
We have our architect, Brian DeBarbieri. And, oh, I'm sorry, Craig, for record-keeping purposes, did you submit colorized versions to the board in advance, or just the black and white?
I did not.
Okay, so I think, Peter, this should be marked as A7.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Matt.
We can. Could you raise your right hand for me?
Yes.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Brian DeBarbieri, D-E-B-A-R-B-I-E-R-I. Address is 97 Chestnut Street in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Licensed professional architect, stay in New Jersey?
Yes, I received my Bachelor of Architecture from Virginia Tech in 2012. I became licensed in the state of New Jersey in 2017, and currently licensed in four other states, New York, Rhode Island, New Hampshire, and Maine.
And you've been qualified as an architect before this board?
Yes.
Accepted.
Thank you. Very brief question, just let the board know what changes you've made to the plans after we were here in July.
Yeah, I'm going to be very brief. Really, the only major changes architecturally to the building is, as the previous witness mentioned, is the reduction of the overall footprint of each building from 73,000 to 72,000 down to 69,252. And everything else really is remaining the same, the exterior design, the orientation of the front entrance, and the truck loading areas, the construction type, the building safety features, the building height, and the energy efficiency characteristics of the building, all remaining the same. I did prepare updated renderings that I presented last time, but I did update them to show the added trees and landscaping along the front, which I can bring up. So this is the south building from the view of the entrance area. I did fade out the landscaping a little bit, just to be able to show the building facade, but you'll see the added landscaping and trees.
So the architectural plan that we had, was the copy submitted to the board colorized?
I believe it was.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. So this.
So this would be 88.
Is A.
88, perfect, thank you, appreciate it.
And then I also prepared a view of the northern building. As you can see, again, the trees have been added along the front.
And that'll be A9.
So I would assume that this view is also where the existing trees are as well, right? Along Atrium Drive, or am I in the wrong direction? I don't do north-south, this is like Atrium Drive side, the other side.
Yeah, so the, I believe the cul-de-sac is on the left of this rendering.
Because, yeah, I've driven down there, and I've seen, I've seen the trees, they're in fairly good shape. I mean, it's been a long time since anybody took care of that place, and of course, it's going to be demolished, so it doesn't matter, but, I mean, I can imagine the stairs and all, everything else is not in great shape because nobody's really maintained it. It looks like it's seen very much better days, but the trees are in good shape along Atrium Drive, and, to Bob's point, they will block a lot of the view from ultimately what will become, I hope we hope, I'm one of a part of our affordable housing, so that's good, yeah. So I would assume, and I should have asked this of Craig, he's still sworn in, but I bet you could answer it, or Matt, you could probably answer it, when it comes to tree replacement, Chapter 222, all that, you guys satisfy it all on site, correct?
Yes, and well in excess.
That's what I thought, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
I have no further questions of Brian.
Does the board have any questions, the architect? Seeing none, thank you, Brian.
Traffic.
Thank you.
Yeah?
We have her sworn?
Of course.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N. Confused by the chairs. Sorry.
Goodness.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
Betsy, I know you've been here many times, and your qualifications are still the same?
Yes, they are.
Okay, you are accepted.
Thank you.
So Ms. Dolan, I know your office prepared a short traffic impact statement in this matter, so why don't you take the board through some of the conclusions of that study?
Sure, the report was prepared, it's dated January 2023, and it was prepared before these buildings were redesigned and made smaller, so the. of a day. We broke that down into trucks and passenger vehicles. And during peak hours or any hour of the day, we're looking at five total trip, truck trips. So I think that's usually what people are interested in, is how much truck activity. So we would expect, based on IT data, the numbers to be a little bit lower, but there was no point in revising to decrease the trip generation. So the other part that we did was we compared the trip generation with the existing former office, and it's a reduction of 200-plus peak hour trips. So it's a much lower generator, and this is not a large enough building for something like an Amazon. And I believe there's a comment in one of the review letters that, it was engineering, yeah, that if it were to be some type of fulfillment, that we'd have to, I guess, discuss that before CO is issued? I think I should just read the comment. Yeah, it's number 14. Should the board act favorably on this application once a tenant is selected? Should revising the land to high cube facility be required? This office recommends as a condition of approval that the applicant come back before the board prior to CO.
And is it your understanding that this facility, given the way the driveways are structured, as well as the size of the warehouses, that that's not the intended end user of this facility?
That is my understanding, and there's a lot of data that's been published about warehousing, but typically, those fulfillment centers are a minimum of 800,000 square feet, usually more like 2 million square feet. So we're well below that type of Amazon-type of building. I think the only other thing I wanted to touch base on, because Craig took you through the revised parking and the site circulation, there is a variance for that truck court. We've got 60-foot bays and an 85-foot two-way travel aisle. So that gets us to 145, and technically, 147 is proposed. But the plans do show trucker-trailer turning paths, so that's been evaluated, and I think we've used that dimension in other applications, and it's been accepted. So the two-foot difference, based on the turning templates, can be granted.
And in other words, it can be, the trucks can safely maneuver according to the templates that we provided as part of this application.
That is correct, and he ran a lot of templates. So I think we've proven that case.
And do you want to just briefly hit on the one other variance that we need, which is the three driveways instead of two? I'm assuming that that's also just for safer circulation of the site?
Yeah, I'm not sure the origin of that, but certainly, based on the templates that we've just talked about, and the fact that the plan's been reduced, I'm sorry, the building areas have been reduced, and there's been an increase in the landscaping and some of the other requests that were made back in July. But certainly, the plan is designed to promote safe and efficient flow, and I don't think that, well, plus, we've got the emergency driveway, so again, I think that can be granted.
I have no further direct questions of this witness.
and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I have a question.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please,
So let's talk about, so this is a reuse of a site that was, developed as existing
for the record.
John Tykina, T as in Thomas, A I, K as in Kelly, I N as in Nicholas, A. All things planning and development, 30 Newman Road, Kendall Park, New Jersey. I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, had business 1992.
office buildings, correct? Always good to know. Thank you. So in your professional opinion, Betsy, how does the traffic compare to warehouse use
When I finished my studies at Rutgers University, and I do this, testify before planning and zoning boards. I was last here in May, I believe, for Hamilton, who happens to be behind me.
in terms of intensity and impact versus the proposed use?
This is a substantial reduction in trip generation.
Be brave.
Excellent. You are accepted.
Thank you so much.
So, John, you have done a planning analysis for the site.
When you look at the IT numbers for the building area for our general office, that would generate
Can you please take the board through the variance relief that's required as part of
more than 200 additional peak hour trips above what this proposed warehouse would be
the application, and in your professional opinion, why we meet our burden under the
generating. So it's a much lower volume use.
positive and negative criteria?
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, other questions for the board, other than for me?
So I am here to talk about the application from a planning standpoint. Very importantly, and I know this was gone over the last time, we kind of fell in between
If not?
Planner?
Planner, thank you, Betsy.
the ordinance changes, ordinance evolutions, I guess, for the business and industry zone. So we are a permitted conditional use. The two conditions that would be required to provide are, one, that we're located on a lot that is no closer than 500 feet to the nearest residentially-zoned property, and we comply with that in your ordinance, actually adopting the business and industry district and the revisions. We were in the green, as they say. And that a warehouse distribution use shall be served by public water and sewer, and we are on the public water and sewer system. So we are permitted conditional use. In terms of the other standards for the conditional use, we believe we meet them, that use is designed and located to be operated in a way that protects the public health and safety. Adequate landscaping and screening has been provided, as has been discussed this evening with our revisions. Adequate off-field parking and loading is provided, and the ingress and egress is designed to provide minimal interference to traffic on the budding streets, and the use conforms to the applicable regulations governing the district. So, again, we believe we meet the standards of your ordinance, both in terms of the specifics and your general conditional use standards. In terms of our variance relief, we require three. We have an impervious, we still have an impervious coverage variance. We've reduced from 76% existing down to 69.85% proposed. 60% is the maximum, but I believe that this reduction is substantial. It is a C1 variance. It's a little bit of a hardship to start to continue to pull up pavement from an existing developed site. And given the use that is in question, we believe it's appropriate to have the impervious cover to make sure that we have adequate fire access all the way around the building. Our number of driveways is three, and again, as we said, that third driveway is on our second street or our cul-de-sac, and it does provide for additional emergency access. So we believe it's a better plan having that access. And then finally, our loading zone width, as Ms. Dolan did talk about, and I appreciate that, we are at 145 feet proposed, as opposed to 147, that is in your ordinance. 147 is actually very, very large. 120 is often adequate for, as a minimum, for these types of uses. So in that Mr. Styers was able to show all the turning movements, we believe that this movement is safe and efficient, and represents a better plan. Again, if we're concerned about impervious coverage, having that reduced loading zone is a good push-me, pull-me to make sure that we provide a better plan. That is the second standard in a C2 variance, that it is a plan that represents a better planning alternative than would be a compliant plan. The first is that we relate to a specific piece of property. Obviously, we're talking about 508 G M Drive, no other parcel. Any relief that you do grant carries no precedence to any other parcel. Everybody has to make their own case, and we do that here. The balancing test is under Pullen V South Plainfield. Again, the overall plan represents a better plan than it would be without the relief. And again, we think that providing for adequate circulation around a warehouse building is the most appropriate thing. We advanced some purposes of zoning, specifically to provide for sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of uses, according to their respective environmental requirements. The applicant proposes a use that's conditionally permitted in the zone, and we believe that the warehouse is appropriately located far enough from adjacent residential areas. Purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic designing arrangement. We've done a nice job of making sure that our parking is out of our front yard setbacks. We have a building pulled up. They will be attractive new warehouse industrial buildings, and represent an attractive freshening to that, what is, I guess, an evolving office district, you know, from where it was in the 80s to where it is today, and again, representing really a dramatic change in the landscape, really, of this portion of the township. And encouraging coordination of the various public and private procedures, shaping land development with a view towards less than the cost of such development, and to the more efficient use of the land. But again, redeveloping an existing developed site that is, you know, gone through its evolution as an office into a modern warehouse facility is closer, is a more efficient use of this land than it would be out on a greenfield parcel, out in the hinterlands, if you will, of the township. You know, as Obi-Wan would say, these are not the warehouses that you're concerned about. You know, this is exactly where you do want those types of things. In terms of your negative criteria, again, the most important thing, no substantial detriment to public good. We're not going to have any detriment to our surroundings. We have our loading internalized, we have our parking well-screened, we have a substantial reduction in traffic. You know, Ms. Dolan said it's 200 more, but it's 200 compared to 27. So again, it is an 80% reduction in traffic on the site. It's really a dramatic reduction, which is going to help our surrounding roadways. This is, provides small uses that are really modest warehouses, that will promote commercial development, enhancing economic development in township. And these are the types of modest warehouse uses that tend to have, you know, good jobs that are associated with them. The building proposed to compliant in terms of height and bulk standards, there'll be adequate light available to the neighboring properties. And then, no variance to be granted, impair the intent and purpose of the zone planning in your zoning ordinance. Again, the goal of your ordinance is to encourage commercial industrial development in areas with access to major highways, in established areas, to locate major employment and traffic uses in areas where they have least impact on residential neighborhoods, and still maintain size of industrial districts to ensure adequate space for light industry, which is this much, this is much closer to that, and warehousing. The proposal specifically implements those ordinance goals that were in your original business and industry district, and in your modified business and industry district, where we are permitted conditional use. In terms of your master plan goals, we are implementing your goals of your master reexamination from September of 2020 that created the business and industry zone. We are kind of adjacent to the goals of your 2025 master plan reexamination, where you modified the business and industry district to go away from strict warehousing and more into a light industrial, a light industry. We would qualify under the light industry sizing of your new ordinance. Again, it would come specific for the use there. But again, we're kind of before that. But again, I don't believe we're impairing the intent and purpose of that, mainly because of where we're located. We are in the right spot, we're in the green, if you will, for your districts to be far enough from residential, that we don't believe there'll be a negative impact. So for those reasons, I believe you have the ability to make the requisite findings. Valuable questions?
Easy one first, John. For your two variances that are C2, do you believe that the benefits substantially outweigh?
Yes, they do. I think it's a much better plan to have, you know, we've reduced the pervious coverage, and, you know, but we still provide for adequate circulation around the buildings. And to do that, that third driveway is a good thing to make sure we have good emergency access from both sides.
So from a purely sort of intellectual standpoint, I rarely hear a C1 invoked, especially in this kind of circumstance. So just interested, why you chose that? Because, I mean, the board could have stuck and said, guys, we're working from a blank slate, 60% is what's permitted in the zone, 60% is what we're going to hold you to. We didn't do that. We said, well, it's compromise, which you did. Maybe my argument would have been, a C2 would have been more, because, I mean, there may be an argument that a commercially viable enterprise could not be done reducing the building size any further. Rather, you chose to cite pulling up pavement, which, to me, is not more difficult than, you know, maybe me taking a loader and driving it very poorly across the parking lot and ripping it up, which doesn't seem all that hard. So I was just wondering, from an intellectual standpoint, why you chose a C1 argument over a C2 for that?
The C1 argument relates to, is a specific condition of this site, and we can't ignore, and we shouldn't ignore, the fact that the existing site is at 78% impervious coverage. And that impervious coverage is a resource. It's a resource to be utilized, and to be utilized efficiently, when you look at the overall elements of the land you saw. So I think it's appropriate there to invoke C1, and say, yes, we have a specific condition on this site in terms of impervious coverage. It's appropriate to utilize that resource in the most effective way, and we believe we've done that. And again, in the balance, so you could do both. We have the balancing with the board, where the board said, okay, you know, 78's too much, 75's too much, 60 is probably too extreme of a change, and we struck the balance in the middle. So again, I think it's appropriate.
John, how about this? Because I certainly agree with your professional opinion, but the board doesn't care if I agree. Why don't you also, because you outlined some other purposes of zoning that are advanced by this application, efficient use of land, sufficient space for a variety of uses. With this type of flex warehouse user, would you also think that perhaps exceeding that 60% impervious coverage in an industrial zone perhaps fits the positive criteria for the C2 variance as well?
Oh, it certainly does. Again, we have a benefit, an overall benefit there, in that our impervious coverage is providing for adequate circulation that is specifically related to this use. So we have our loading requirements, where, again, we have trucks that need to safely, efficiently move around the site. We have parking requirements for our employees, and we have emergency access requirements for our emergency services. So you add all those things up, and again, the elements of this use kind of add up in terms of the impervious needs, and we think that's why it's an appropriate balance, to provide for a little bit more on whole, and it represents a better planning alternative to have that additional circulation space on these types of use.
So, short and sweet, impervious coverage, you think it's C1 or C2, and for the other two, it's C2?
Yes.
No further questions?
Yeah, okay. No, I did it purely, I asked the question purely from an intellectual standpoint, because really, I mean, the way we were taught, right, when we go to the board planning courses, right, is, oh, you got a triangular-shaped lot, you're putting a square house on it, you can't meet the setbacks, you can't meet, there's going to be variances, and that you're constrained by the lot shape, or by a stream buffer, or something that, you know, advances the MLUO.
Yeah, I've seen it.
We really don't have that in this case, which is why, sort of, from only, like, from an intellectual standpoint, I could, I see your argument now that you've explained it, I see the C2 argument. I just wanted the board to fully understand kind of where that was, just from a...
Sure. Peter can disagree, but I think you're right. Usually, C1 is reserved to physical characteristics of the site, but I have seen C1 criteria used when, let's say, a building is obsolescent, and/or a site's function is obsolescent, and a planner will say, well, we actually do have a hardship here because of the sheer amount of changes that we have to make to the property in order to make it economically viable.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, thanks. Any questions to the board for John, for the planner? All right, well, thank you very much. Let me open to the public, and then you can make your final summation or whatever. Make a motion to open to the public for this here.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Anybody who wishes to speak on this application, please come forward, state your name and address. Go once, twice, thrice. No takers. Move to close, huh?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are looking you can't meet the setback, you can't meet, there's going to be variances, and that you're constrained by the lot shape or by a stream buffer or something that, you know, advances the MLUO.
Yeah, I've seen it.
We really don't have that in this case, which is why, sort of, from only, like, from an intellectual standpoint, I could, I see your argument now that you've explained it, I see the C2 argument. I just wanted the board to fully understand kind of where that was, just from a...
Sure. Peter can disagree, but I think you're right. Usually, C1 is reserved to physical characteristics of the site, but I have seen C1 criteria used when, let's say, a building is obsolescent and/or a site, site's function is obsolescent, and a planner will say, well, we actually do have a hardship here because of the sheer amount of changes that we have to make to the property in order to make it economically viable.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, thanks. Any questions to the board for John, for the planner? All right, well, thank you very much. Let me open to the public, and then you can make your final summation or whatever. Make a motion to open to the public for this here.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Anybody who wishes to speak on this application, please come forward, state your name and address. Go once, twice, three, no takers, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are looking tonight for our preliminary and final major site plan approval for this project. As you've heard, there is some very minor variance relief, three driveways instead of two, two-foot deficiency in the loading area, and then the impervious coverage, which again, is, as testified by our planner, is being improved by virtue of this application, knocking almost 10% off of what's there now. And so, what we would hope is that we were receptive to the board's comments, we added landscaping, we wanted to make sure the site could be circulated safely. We even reduced the building coverage, size of the buildings, in order to better fit some of the suggestions that you made when we were here in July, to the extent that, you know, we're more in, and Mr. Taikina touched on this a little bit, more in sort of that flex warehouse, light industrial size, 69,000 and change per each warehouse. I can say from doing these developments all over the state, these are sort of your, small business goes in and ships locally, is sort of what we're hoping an end user to be here. It's not a fulfillment center, it's not 800,000 square feet where you have the pack and pick vans that arrive in a line at one time. We're talking, according to our traffic testimony, and that's with the larger size of the building as predicted by ITA, peak hour, one truck every 12 minutes. So what we would hope is that you see that, although warehousing is no longer permitted, we did get in when it was a permitted conditional use, that you see that this is the kind of development that makes sense for this location in the township. So we would be looking for an approval, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Matt. So I'll go ahead and move to approve with the condition that all of the minor comments that still need to be worked out, or technical comments in the engineer's report, are satisfied. And we increased the loading zone signs to include, or sorry, the no idling signs to include one every four spaces, and the loading docks attached to the loading dock. I think, I don't think there's anything else we need to do about trees. Anything else I'm missing in particular?
I think there was a secondary no idling sign that was requested at the entrance to the other parking area.
Mr. Chairman, I think if it's, I think the condition should be satisfying, all outstanding staff reports, I think that's basically...
Yeah, I'm just trying to call out the things we specifically talked about, and the only thing that really stands out is the idling signs, everything else you were, was minor and was engineering detail. So, well, with those conditions, I would move to approve.
We need a second?
Second.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes, I just want to say, I do appreciate the cooperation that we got from you in making some pretty substantial changes, and I agree with you, this is a project that does make sense where it's being put.
Thank you.
Mark Dancy?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
You know, when you first, when you first came here, and I guess it was July, we had staff reports that were verging on two years old, so, but we had a good discussion that night, and I'm very pleased with what the applicant has done to address all of the comments in the staff reports. And I also feel that this complies with the master plan for all the reasons stated by your planner and by ours in terms of, you know, the right place for this type of development. So with that, I'm a yes.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we will turn it over to Mr. Linus and Hamilton Street Management. So while you're getting set up for all that, I'll do a little soft shoe here. So not unlike the application we just heard, this is one we had sent back for a little tweaking and a little fine tuning, not so much for the same reasons, but more for just specifics of the site plan that we wanted to see actually written down in black and white or as be it in color, to assure that the board was getting what the applicant was promising, and we didn't feel we had the information that night to do it. So some similarities, some differences. So we granted preliminary approval, and now the applicant is coming before us for final site plan approval. And with that, I think I've done enough intro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, members of the public. My name is Frank Healy, this is my office. He's in Franklin Township.
Frank?
Frank, can you use that, yeah?
Yeah. And my office is in Franklin Township and have been here for a number of years. Okay, the chairman is exactly correct. This is an application for final site plan approval for the project located at 681-685 Hamilton Street. It's known as Block 281, lots 1 to 9. It's a .52 acre site located on the northern side of Hamilton Street between Bayer Avenue and North Dover Drive. Site has frontage on all three streets. It's located in the township's Hamilton Street Business District Zone, and it currently contains a one-story commercial building, I believe it's a barber shop, a detached garage, and a paved parking area. Surrounding properties consist of commercial uses and paved parking areas. Surrounding properties consist of also commercial uses and mixed-use buildings with commercial uses on the first floor, apartments above on a long Hamilton Street with residences located to the rear, the northern portion of the site. This board favored this application with preliminary approval on February 18, 2025, and adopted a resolution memorializing that approval on April 16, 2025. Since that time, the applicant has been working with the board staff and the board professionals in revising its engineering plans and revising its architectural plans in accordance with the directions that were given to us by the board and some of the comments by the board. And the plans you're going to be reviewing tonight for approval, hopefully, are dated June 9, 2025. Those are the revised engineering plans, and the architectural plans were revised through April 19, 2025. As I've indicated before, these plans were reviewed by the board professionals, and we have certain reports that we can discuss tonight and will be discussed by our witness, Mr. Khan. The review report is a memorandum by Mark Healy, your Director of Planning, dated August 21, 2025, Darren Mazai of the Township Engineers Office, dated August 27, 2025. In addition, we have a small review by John House, the Director of Fire Prevention, in a memo dated August 25, 2025, and a revised report from the Franklin Township Sewerage Authority dated September 3, 2025. Not to steal his thunder, but I can tell the board we can and will comply with all the items in every report. Now, the final plans did pick up a variance, and that was at the request of the board. The board wanted to see perhaps how towers would look on the building, so we installed some towers. Unfortunately, that caused a very de-minimis increase in the lot coverage, the building coverage, from 50%, which is the maximum allowed in the zone, to 50.52%, which is, we believe, a de-minimis increase. The variance for lot coverage has been reviewed, and basically, Mr. Healy has indicated in his report that he can support a C2 variance for those towers, the introduction of those towers. Now, I have three people here who are available for testimony. I intend to produce one witness, and that's Mr. Adnan Khan, who testified originally. He's the site engineer, civil engineer from AWZ Engineering, Inc. He's the applicant's civil engineer. I also have available from the architect's office, in case the board or the public has any questions, Mr. Kareem Bajda. And also available is Akash Dari. He's a principal and managing member of Hamilton Street Management, LLC. So he's available for questioning. So without further ado, Mr. Chairman, I have Mr. Khan, and hopefully you'll swear him in.
I will. If you could raise your right hand for me, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Adnan Khan, K-H-A-N, AWZ Engineering, 150 River Road, Montville, New Jersey.
Mr. Khan, you previously appeared and qualified as an expert in the area of professional engineering before this board, is that correct?
Correct.
And since you last appeared and so qualified, have your credentials been detrimentally affected at all?
No.
And your license is still in good standing?
There is.
Accepted.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Khan, would you go over with the board some of the changes that were made with respect to the final application? That's before the board.
Before I go to the site plan with the changes, I just want to quickly go over the architecture plan, because that's what's transpired, the changes to the site plan. And of course, there were some comments that we received from the professionals, board professionals. As you recall, in the last meeting, we had an elevation which looks a little flatter, and then the comment from the board came in, like, if we want to add some elements towards the end of the building. So the architect went back, and I believe in consultation with the board professionals, we came up with the idea, or he came up with the idea, of adding towers to the, both the ends of the elevation on Hamilton Street. So that's what basically has been changed, as far as the elevation, the number of units, number of parking, everything remained the same. In order to do these changes and create this notch on both the sides, that's the reason that .52% of the increase in the building coverage that you see. But again, this is, I believe, is, I mean, justified in the sense because now the building looks much better than what was originally proposed.
All right, from an engineering standpoint, do you believe it qualifies as a C2 variance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And in that situation, do you believe that it advances the following purposes of the municipal land use law? It encourages municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which promotes the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And do you believe that another purpose of the municipal land use law, more specifically 55D-2C, is satisfied it provides adequate light, air, and open space?
It does, yes.
And then finally, I think the most important provision of the land use law, the special reason, at least from a legal perspective, would be subsection I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement.
That is correct, yes, in my opinion, yes.
And this was at the request of the board. We didn't initially apply for the variance, but we did notice and we did apply for the variance at final at the request of the board.
Correct.
Now, on the negative side, do you believe that if the board favors us with the grant of the variance they requested, that it would have a detrimental impact on the zone plan and scheme?
Yes, my opinion, yes.
No, it will not have a detrimental impact.
I mean, like, no, no detrimental effect, actually, it enhances, it promotes what the board requested, and it enhances the overall look of the building.
Okay, all right. And basically, that's your testimony. Do you believe that it benefits the community, this enhanced view of the towers?
I think it is, because I believe one of the comment originally was that this building mimics the building next door. Now, it's a significant change from the building next door. So I think it enhances the looks.
All right. Do you think the overall benefits substantially outweigh any possible detriment?
Yes.
Do you see any detriment to the public good?
No, I don't see it.
Okay. You can go on with your testimony.
All right, okay. All right, so basically, what the changes, as I mentioned, like, it increased the building coverage from 50% to 50.52, so that triggers a variance. However, internally, there are a few changes. Since the building coverage increased, it also increased the lot coverage. And in order to avoid the lot coverage variance, which is 85% as required by the board, and we are very close at...
You're talking about impervious coverage?
Impervious coverage, which we are very close, like, 84.5. So what we did, one change here, is like, if you recall, like, this driveway on North Dover Avenue was used to be a two-way driveway. So we made it one-way exit driveway. So we have a full driveway, full access driveway from Bayer Avenue, cars coming in and out. However, the cars can only leave out of North Dover Avenue. And this is in order to avoid that lot coverage variance. If, and again, we are flexible with that, if the board wishes that we go back with that full exit and entrance driveway, it will increase the impervious coverage, and it will create, again, like, very insignificant variance, probably maybe one or two point, half a percent, I would say, half a percent over 85%. But right now, we are complying, and we are less than 85%. So that's something that, again, we are flexible as far as making it either one-way or two-way. So as the board, however directs us, we will comply with that.
All right, Mr. Khan, have you had the opportunity to review the most recent staff reports on this application?
Yes.
Okay. The first report that I'm going to refer you to is Mr. Healy, the Director of Planning, August 21, 2025 report. Can the applicant and will the applicant comply with the comments of Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to refer you to the report of Darren Mazai, he's the Township Engineer and the Representative of the Township with respect to this matter. And he issued a report, his latest report, August 24, 2025. Can the applicant and will the applicant comply with the comments made by Mr. Mazai?
Yes, we can. However, like, again, just for the board's sake, we had a meeting this morning with Mr. Mazai and Mr. Healy. And we went over, and Mr. Mazai wants me to bring into attention of the board few things that are in his report, and we agreed to comply with. One is, there is a slight light spillage in this corner of the property, which we agreed that we will work with our lighting plan and try to eliminate that lighting spillage across the property line. Originally, there were some trees or shade trees on Bayer Avenue, which subsequently, based on one of the comment from the board professional, were removed. Now, we agreed back again this morning that we will need those trees, and the applicant is okay providing those trees back on Bayer Avenue. So we'll have the shade trees, just like we have it on North Dover and Hamilton, we will add the shade trees along...
Well, let's be clear, there was a reason for the Bayer Avenue taking those trees out. I think they were because of utilities. So we don't want shade trees there, we probably want flowering trees, right? Mark knows what they are, but you know.
I believe the comment came from, generally, we don't want street trees in the right-of-way.
Right.
Typically. I think that the Department of Public Works, then, when they have, when we have applications along Hamilton Street, they recommend that they be taken out of the right-of-way. But on Hamilton Street, just by the nature of the development in that area, that's the only place to put them, because the buildings are allowed to be right up on the property line. So what I would recommend, Chairman, is that the trees be added back in, and that they coordinate with staff as to what types of trees. I don't know if it's utilities, if that's the exact...
I thought it was overhead from what I was reading, but yeah, I mean, whatever the case may be, there's plenty of literature out there on which...
Yeah, we actually have a planting plan for Hamilton Street for those exact situations. So if there are overhead utilities, then they'll have to choose those, the trees that are selected for that purpose.
Not to be done by Ted, but my personal favorite is Syringa Reticulata, it's tree laloc. We really like those. You see, there's a few out here in front that the Shade Tree Commission planted, and there's a couple up in the post office.
Oh, we'll definitely look into it.
Okay, did you have the opportunity, Mr. Khan, to review Mr. House's, he's the Director of Fire Prevention, his report of August 25, 2025? And can and will the applicant agree to comply with all his comments?
Yeah, those comments will be addressed once we go to the design phase.
Okay. And finally, the other staff report, more recent staff report, is the report of the Township Sewerage Authority, and it's dated September 3, 2025. Can we and will we comply with those comments?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you were asked by a board member at the last hearing to make a presentation to the county regarding tightening up the radius. You want to explain that issue and what you've done since then?
Sure. I think the radius in question is from Hamilton Avenue, making a right, Hamilton Street, making a right turn on Bayer Avenue. Right now, if you look at the curb radius, it's pretty wide, and I think the concern is why one of the board members is like, the cars at a high speed make that turn, which is not safe for the pedestrians crossing the street. So what we did is, like, based on the recommendation by the board, we prepared a small sketch, a rough sketch, we submitted that to the county. I believe that was early September. That was submitted by an email to the county, and we showed... That was submitted via an email to the county, and we showed, like, from the way the site currently is, which is this radius, and how we can tighten up the radius and come up with a better solution. So we submitted that request to the county. We got an email about a week later saying that they are, this is under review, and they will get back to us.
All right. And, and basically, it's within the jurisdiction of Somerset County, is that not correct?
That is correct.
That's why we're approaching the county?
That is correct. And again, we tried to follow up, and they're still saying they're still under review. So as soon as we get some response, if it's a positive response, we already have a sketch. As far as the engineering-wise, we can implement that based on the response. Again, if they come back with, they says, no, they don't want us to do anything, then we have to leave.
So basically, the county is going to be the determinant of what?
That is correct. They have jurisdiction over the issue.
But does the county understand that, that this is the, what the board was asking for?
Yes, in our email that we sent it to them, we specifically said, based on our hearing, and this is a request made by the town.
Okay.
All right, I have no further questions.
So Frank, I had suggested in our call today that you go through, you went through the staff reports, but there were a number of, and you've addressed some of them, but there were specific conditions of the board's preliminary approval, many of which came from the board and not directly from staff. And I suggested that you go through and let the board know kind of where you stand on each of those conditions of preliminary.
Is this in your report, Mark?
Yeah, these are the, you know, the Roman numeral.
Oh, the Roman numerals.
One through.
Always the details.
Because, again, these are the reasons why the board basically only granted preliminary, having you come back.
So, so let's, let's, let's parse these a little bit, because there's some, I think, there may be more than others. So number I, you say it's satisfied. The detail of the wall needs to be added to the plan's material, blah, blah, blah. And we don't need to hear more about that, just comply. Number two, satisfied. Three, satisfied. Let's keep going here. Trees should be added to this buffer, proposed arbivorous, that, I don't know, partially satisfied. Oh, so add trees. I hate arbivorous, and do something else. I don't know if there's deer in that area, but, you know, you're going to have, you're going to have some pruning going on. But at any rate, referred to the board engineer to the trees in the rear. What did the board engineer say about that, Mark, on number?
Yeah, we, we discussed that in our meeting today, and I believe that's in Darren's report. He had some questions about the feasibility of saving some of the trees that they're, had indicated as being preserved. They agreed to basically look into that and work that out with the engineer. If they can't be preserved, then they would have to, they, in our meeting, and I believe I'm summarizing our meeting correctly today, if they can't save them, then they would add more, more trees back in, proposed trees, to compensate.
And if they didn't have room for those, they would have to make contribution in kind, per chapter 222. Okay, no dens, right? We talked about that. EV space, satisfied. Okay, let's see what's not satisfied. Eight, turning radius, oh, you just addressed that. So I would just ask that, and, and this is simple, I don't, I don't know why it wasn't, rather than Mark asking, does the county understand? Can you just forward a copy or copy Mark on the emails that you send to the county? So we know what you asked. It's so simple. We don't need to go back and forth and wonder about that, because it's, you've written it, just copy us, please. Revision of the lighting, partially satisfied, applicant needs to risk, further changes, reduced light trespass on the adjoining residential property. Where are we on that, Mark?
Yep, they, they agreed, he just agreed in testimony that they're, they're going to look into that.
Okay, how about X10? Refuse and recycling plan? I mean, that, that's, that's stuff that's, I mean, shouldn't be.
We agreed to provide a written refuse and recycling, recyclable plan.
Architectural plans or color palette, you just described those. EV charging stations, dispersing, I think you agreed to that?
Yeah, we, we, we agreed that we'll definitely look into it. Once we have the construction drawings and the meetings, initial meetings with the utility companies, the applicant is okay as far as dispersing, but usually, utility companies dictates what and where we can do things. So we agree to that, that we will coordinate with the utility companies.
So we're ready, yes? I think so. You said that one?
The building will be ready for solar, but there is no date yet set aside for the installation.
Just has to be able to bear the weight.
Yeah.
Let's see, the other one, satisfied, we talked about. I think you gave testimony, planning testimony even on that. That's the impervious, blah, blah, blah. Let's see, soldier course, I don't even know what that means, but looking at the picture, it's, looks like the way the block looks or whatever along, so, let's see, street trees on buyer, we did, we already talked about that. Building height, assume you'll measure it correctly.
Right.
222, we talked about that already. If you can replace the trees, you, you know how that goes. Frank, Frank is very familiar with that. Intersecting street side yard setback, well, what does any of this mean? It would appear building setback would comply, but not satisfied. You're going to have to explain that one to me. I think it's the second-to-last bullet of whatever, yes, there you go.
Footnote 13, schedule two, a long-intersecting streets, the side yard setback shall be 20 feet where abutting an existing one or two-family home. The comment is that thus where adjacent to Lot 36, the required building setback is 20 feet. The site plan drawing and the zoning table should be revised to reflect this required setback.
Like, this is about as technical as it gets. I mean, the, the variance, if there was a variance, had been granted previously, just making sure that the, that the plans reflect the zoning requirements.
So you all worked that out?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's see, development subject to affordable housing fees, yep, we know that. Let's see, number 17, applicant prepares, and applicant by the site plan approved, what? No, you don't.
Yep, they're, they're here now.
There you go. Okay, all right. That's what I thought. I don't, I don't want to see, again, no offense, but. And payment in fund, the fund parking deficiency aid spaces need to be paid. You agree to pay it, right? Okay. And you're good with Darren's report, right? I don't think any of the other staff reports had anything significant in them.
That's correct.
But if you did, you'll comply with them, correct?
Absolutely. We can and will comply with all the comments of every staff report that I've referred to.
Fantastic. Board have any questions? All right. Without further ado, move to open to the public for any questions or comment on this Somebody should say second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wishing to comment on this application? Please step forward, give us your name and address.
Seeing no one, move to close the public session.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any summation?
Yes, very briefly, this is an application for final. We were before the board for preliminary. The board favored us with preliminary approval. We've worked very diligently between preliminary and final, so that we've presented a plan before you that we believe is worthy of your consideration. The one new variance, and I noticed for it, had to do with the request of the board regarding the introduction of towers to the building, and we believe that it qualifies as a C2 variance, and under the pull-in case, a benefit to the community, a net benefit to the community. Having said that, we would ask that this board favor this application with final approval, subject all the conditions that we've enumerated and that we've discussed tonight.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one comment, which is, you know, as, again, as the applicant indicated, they addressed, just, just so the board is clear, the reason for this variance, again, is that the design standards in the Hamilton Street Business Zone speak to having, you know, particular architectural emphasis on building corners. And this site has two building corners. And they did that, you know, the, the renderings that were in your packet, there were some three-dimensional renderings that were in your packet on the website, addressed that. I think the building, the addition of that tower feature on each side, I think significantly improves the aesthetics of the building and addresses that design standard of the Hamilton Street Zone. The variance is .5%. I, I think, again, clearly, that's, in my opinion, that's a C2 variance, if there ever was one, very de minimis, and again, a significant improvement to the aesthetics of the building. The, with respect to the impervious surface, staff recommends that both driveways stay two-way. Staff's never recommended, you know, and, you know, let's not have, you know, a less functional site plan just to avoid a .5 impervious variance. So I would say, you know, again, I think similar to the lot coverage, the building coverage variance, I think the testimony was that it'd be less than 1%. So if the board was inclined to approve a variance, again, the notice went out for any and all variances, this came out during the testimony. So I, again, I think a variance for impervious of up to 86% would be justified under the same C2 variance as I explained for the building coverage variance. Basically, results from the change to the, you know, the addition of these two towers.
Yes, and there is a catch-all provision in the notice.
Oh, no, that's fine. I mean, thank you for going there, Mark, I'd realized, well, you were talking about the, the tower, the towers that necessitated the impervious, that we kind of left your question about the driveways hanging. So thank you for going there. So we, both driveways should be full movement, and we have asked you for certain things that creates a de minimis variance, because we believe it is a benefit, and that the benefits outweigh the detriments under C2.
Will comply.
Okay, excellent. So with that, I will make a motion to approve with the variance for impervious coverage of 50.52%, where 50% is the maximum, and compliance with all staff reports and revisions to staff reports herein, and any outside agency compliance as well.
So it's the lot coverage variance, that's the 50% de minimis?
It's building, it's building coverage, I think that's the 50.
Building coverage.
And then the lot coverage is 86%.
Two variants.
Two variants, okay. So let me amend, let me amend, so that's very good. So 86% for lot coverage instead of 85%, which is the maximum required. Again, a de minimis variance, same justification of C2. Okay, there you go. That's my motion.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.